This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
This is the Rules and Government Relation Party of the East Hampton City Council, May 15, 2025. All members present, if you could identify, there are some JP decisions here.
Mr. Jatsak?
E.T. Terrell?
Excellent. Uh, did we have any minutes from past meetings?
Yes, you just sent.
Yeah, we have some from February 12th.
February.
Was our last meeting. I sent them this afternoon.
Ah, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, well, we can wait till next meeting. We can do the next one there.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I didn't get a text. If you sent something especially on a
Oh, okay.
Text name, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll make that note. I'm sure we get that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There's no public present. However, we're all here and we may, we can speak as members of the public. I sometimes do at full city council. I don't think that could happen, right? Don't get in the absence of that. Uh, anyone on line, I don't see anybody who's joined us, so we're good there. And only two items of business, but this is easy on me. Great?
Thanks.
And usually are, especially when it gets technical like charter. Why don't we delve into the charter first? Uh, we had gotten some feedback from the city attorney. I summarized the feedback and developed some additional language which I shared. I was hoping we had a chance to go over that, because we did for the public. Um, we had been focusing on compensation, but then had an issue with term of office. So, let's start with definitions. It would be helpful to clarify, I believe, definitions. Quadrennial regular city election. The words "quadrennial regular city election" shall mean a regular city election held every four years in November, just prior to the mayor's regular term of office, at which the mayor is elected. Currently, we have language that refers to the biennial election of the mayor. Uh, not a biennial election, but the biennial election that we have, and so it's unclear where exactly we fall with the mayoral election, especially there are some issues that occurs, that occur, like the term of office. Term of office, section 3.1 of the mayor shall be four years and shall begin on the first Monday of the January following. Now, it says in that section "biennial", we change it to "quadrennial regular city election", which we've defined in section 1.7. Uh, and the mayor will just chose them and shall continue until his successor has been qualified. All the language remains the same. We've just made that thing to be quadrennial, every four years. Question?
Um, so just to clarify, so this first section definitions is new proposed.
That's a new, always new.
Well, it's the
Some of it, all of it, all of it is new.
What's in red?
Yeah, and it should be in red. The definition section probably should be in red.
Is the section 3.1, that is, language is already in the charter and we're just editing that language?
We're editing in red there, and the section 1.7 definitions, there is none.
Okay.
I'm probably should put that in red. I mean, I can pick, go, make it in red.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you. That was, that'll make it red. Uh, we were mainly wanting to deal with C compensation because under the current charter, as we recall, the salary is defined in the first 12 months of the councilor's term. The councilors are elected every two years, so in a four-year mayoral term, it would be the first or the third terms. The first and the third years of the councilors, that you could do salaries, doesn't make sense to do it in the first year of a four-year term. But rather in the third year, then you're much closer to when the election would occur.
I understand that.
So that's why we were working on the language, which we originally proposed to the attorney. And of course, he came back. And so I'll read the compensation section. "The city council shall by ordinance establish an annual salary for the mayor. No ordinance increasing or decreasing." We talked about that at the last meeting, I believe, and suggested that probably should include that language, which we didn't cover. "The salary of the mayor shall be effective." "No increase or ordinance increasing or decreasing the salary of the mayor shall be effective unless it shall have been enacted in the first 12 months of the term of which councilors are elected." That's the current language. If there's a period at the end of that clause. If we dropped the period and then add "in the third year", the first 12 months of which councilors are elected in the third year of a four-year regular mayoral term. "The ordinance must provide that such salary becomes effective in Jan-, in January of the year following the regular city election", which would be the fourth year of the mayor's regular term. Any thoughts about those words for this section? The attorney seemed pretty much in agreement with this.
I, it's not a major thought. I just think that first word of the second sentence, "nor," should be "no."
Should be.
Would motivate us to strike the whole "nor." Um, and then, as you mentioned, we should strike the period to connect the last two sentences.
Figure out how to do that in Word. So, if you, if you have an idea, when I hit negative there, it just did nothing. You know, usually you can do a strike through. Did nothing. That's good. Yes, but we shouldn't.
Just my two grammatical changes.
Oh, I love them. They're exactly what we need to do. Thank you.
Go ahead, cross that out as soon as it was added.
"Nor, nor, nor, nor." Uh, so if that's ready to go, I would send that either to the council or to the, to the attorney one last time.
I think as long as we change those two grammatical things, I mean, it's you have to read it slow to understand. It doesn't necessarily flow, but if you read it carefully, it took me a couple of times.
Yeah.
The bottom part easier. Yeah.
I'll explain some of the reasoning behind complexity when I crack the bottom. Because the attorney came up with, "Well, what happens if the mayor, if the office becomes vacant this in the second year or the third year of the, of the term? What do you do?" Well, he said the charter has provisions to have a temporary in certain situations, and the charter does go to the next regular city, uh, next city election. Okay, let's say it's the second year. They're going to have an election in the second year of the term. The charter also says the mayor's term is a four-year term. So you're electing a mayor who said for six years. I said, "Whoa."
Yeah, I think this is clear.
This is clear for this.
We should just make sure we don't lose to, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, watching here and there. Thank you. Um, so this is, this is, I think, okay to go back to him and then get to the council.
Yeah.
The question he's raising, though, is that we could be in a situation next year where there's the year after, the possibility of a six-year term. If there's a six-year term, well, when do you? He said, "Well, there's a six-year term." So then the question.
Maybe I missed, I feel like I missed, how can you just say?
Yeah, let's see.
I think I missed that.
You're overthinking this.
Jumping the six-year possibility.
All right, I'll share with you some of the things now. We go to the regular side. Uh, as you go down to
Still in here.
We're still in here. Turn the lights on.
I know, it's not very exciting.
George.
Done the primaries, unfortunately, the office of the mayor being taken, for example, due to the second year, which I can't really refer to. So when the person just elected for the remaining two years of the term then?
That's what you would think.
That's my
But he refers to 3.9.
3.9.
He's always thinking, there has to be an election for a new mayor, but that new mayor would be elected for the remainder of the current term.
Yeah.
Okay, so it says, I can read this, 3.9. "Special election. If a vacancy in the office of the mayor occurs in the first or the third year of the What do you get for 3.9? Just grab the
Yeah, I have it in front of me. It says, um, "If a vacancy occurs in the office of mayor during the first or third year of the term for which the mayor is elected, whether by reason of blah, 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 the city council shall forthwith order a special mayoral election to be held within 120 days following the date of the vacancy occurs to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term. If a vacancy occurs in the second or fourth year of the term for which the mayor is elected, a special mayoral election need not be held. The office of mayor shall be temporarily filled pursuant to subsection B, and the position shall be filled by voters at the next regular municipal
Municipal election, which would occur in the second year of the
But that, in that case, the mayor would still only hold office for two years and not have
That's what we assume.
I think that's what it says.
Yeah, I think that's
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I would argue, I'm not a lawyer, but I've worked with a lot of contracts and legal stuff. I would argue that the language says that it's pretty clear enough.
So, he writes back. He writes back, "I think if the mayor's office was empty in the second year, then the mayor would be sworn in immediately, immediately following the next municipal election." For 3.9B.
The 3.9B says, "If a vacancy occurs in the office of mayor in the second or fourth year of the term for which the mayor is elected, the president of the city council or another councillor elected by council in accordance with subsection A shall serve as acting mayor until the next regular municipal election, at which time the person elected to fill the office of mayor for the ensuing term of office shall be immediately sworn into office and shall thereafter serve in addition to the term for which they were elected, the balance of the present term." So, my reading of that is they, let's say, it happens this year or whatever, right? So we have, we're in the second year. So they would get elected in November, they would fill the term or fill the role immediately, so November, December, and then the two years after that would also be part of their term, but then they would have to, then it would end.
That's what we want, to be sure.
I think that's what it says here.
So he writes and he says, "And the term would last for the remainder of the present term and the term for which they were elected."
Right, so that's the saying.
As long as six years, he writes.
I don't agree with that because there's no way there would ever be a six-year.
No, people don't want six years, so I'm gonna go back to him.
I would argue strongly that I think he's misreading it because there's no way that the term would be able to be more than four years because if the vacancy occurs within the four-year period, what it's saying is that basically it's just saying that the new mayor will serve out the remainder of the few months between when the election is held and then when the, like, official start date for the remainder of the term is, because now it's a four-year term, that's every two years.
One would expect that you would fill the remainder of the term.
Correct.
Yeah, so
And that's the language that
So I, I don't see others any way that if, like, let's say, let's say the mayor, we elect a mayor this fall and then they can't do it in January for some reason. We would immediately hold another special election, but the longest term the person would be able to hold would be four years. There would be no way that they'd be able to do more than four years.
So it would pass another major election. That just wouldn't
But that language isn't, that language is covered because it would be on the first year if it happened.
Right, which is covered here.
Which is clearly covered.
Yeah, I think, I think the second and fourth are also pretty clear, to my reading. And again, I'm not a lawyer, but
Yeah, he threw me for a curveball on that one. And said, "You may want to clear that up." Let's leave that for him, so we may have further, and see if he has any suggestions.
Do you have the actual text of where he said six years? I'm just curious when he actually wrote to you.
Yeah.
So he's saying, "If the mayor's office was empty in the second year, the mayor would be sworn in immediately following the next municipal election. The term would last for the remainder of the present term and the term for which they were elected." But the term, I think that's the thing, is the term is not, it doesn't restart the clock. It doesn't start a new four years.
He said it's the first two.
He said, he said that wasn't clearly clearly described.
Yeah, I'm just gonna read this one more time. First or third. "If a vacancy occurs in second or fourth year, a special election need not be held. It will be temporarily filled pursuant to subsection B, which is, someone from city council will be a temporary mayor. Then at the next regular election." See, this is why I think it's covered because basically, there's a, there's, no matter what happens, if it's a two- or four-year issue, someone from city council will be acting mayor until the next regular election. So the only amount of time that the new mayor can serve will be two years plus whatever the timing is, which will be like a month essentially.
Which would make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's just like, there's, I, I think it's
That's what we want.
Clear that the term does not start new.
Or extend to pass another election.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
And then it'd be clear that it'd be the remainder, that it's finishing the term.
Yeah, because in the, in subsection B, it says "for the ensuing term of office." It doesn't say "for a new term of office." So to me, that is the key language right there. Sorry?
Dictionary, do we have a dictionary definition?
Well, I mean, I can pull it up on the internet.
Following.
Yeah, basically
Insuing.
It says occurring afterwards or as a result. So basically, it's the rest of the term, not a new four years.
Let's see what he, let's see what he said. Maybe he'll, he'll come up with something that's simple.
Yeah.
Could be a simple
You can let him know that the rest of the committee feels like we're
The committee had some, had some questions about it.
We thought it was clear.
Uh, but a lot of it is, you know, like, uh, if you're comfortable with this, we could vote on it, subject to his review again with the, with the
I mean, I'm comfortable with it as is, so happy to vote.
I also am.
But then I would even gain a motion.
Motion to vote on this new language.
All right, second?
Second.
You have a second? Need to further discussion on it? And being done. Not too much.
Okay.
The opposite, yeah. Your vote?
Oh, um, I vote to approve this new language as has been written out here with the edits that we mentioned.
And make that recommendation to the council.
I also vote to send this to the recommend, recommend to send this to the regular council.
But I, I concur, 3.0. Motion passes. We will let it pass, your turning, and since we have five votes to vote for.
You need this back?
I don't know, I'm getting it. We have this.
I shall like to give it.
Please do. We have one other item on the agenda, and that was the proposal. Have a rent study committee now that we made a recommendation to, uh, the state rep, to the state senator for the recommendation was for a study committee, was submitted by four councilors. Um, I'd love to hear more about that thought. I know it was very detailed. Uh, Council Pete, Council Denham, yourself, and, uh, there was a fourth.
Uh.
Council Pete, Council Denham, yourself.
Council Smith.
Council Tammer Smith.
Yes. Who was the other person?
It doesn't seem like we've touched
It wasn't a million years ago.
It's a while ago.
Uh, yes, I'm happy to share a little more about the thought process.
I, I, I know there was a detailed and I'd love to hear about the thought process. The detail seems pretty clear about who appoints the council president appoint, that it'd be a nine-member committee and then three councilors, uh, two members from the rental community and two members from the landlord community.
Mm-hmm.
So that gets five, seven, and, oh, yeah, five, seven, and who were the other two?
So, so I'll just, I'll just kind of quickly recap it. So what the proposal is to have, um, up to three city councilors, so it doesn't have to have, it don't have to be three, but up to, so no more than three city councilors. That's three right there. Um, up to two members being representatives from the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee. So that's five total then. And then at least two members being renters, and then the final two would be landlords. I didn't get my finger right at the
So that's nine, okay.
Yes, that would be, so no, no more than nine total, but a little bit of flexibility within how that's grouped. So it could be, for example, one city councillor and three renters, or three landlords, or two city councillors and one, or, yeah, one affordable here.
Any combination of nine.
Some combination.
Those four. And
Exactly. The only, I think, like, real thing is just at least two members have to be renters and at least two members have to be landlords. So, um, so nine total.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and the idea behind this committee coming out of the resolution from a few weeks ago was, um, two main focuses. The first focus would be for this committee to explore whether or not we would want to make a legislative petition to Massachusetts because one of the ways that we could address rent control and rent stability in East Hampton would be to go directly to Mass General Court and ask them to allow us to implement rent control just in East Hampton because it's not Massachusetts-wide right now, so it'd be the first focus. So basically exploring that feasibility. Is it a path that as a city we would want to go down? What would the ramifications be? Is it feasible? All that stuff. The second focus would be to basically study, research, analyze data, talk, whatever is involved with understanding any other specific acts that East Hampton as a city could do to effectively support and protect East Hampton renters. So as part of that, we had proposed that the committee would do an in-depth review of all the existing bodies and programs that the city has that are related to housing. Because when we initially put the resolution together, we realized that there are already groups that are working on this, but we don't have a comprehensive list or an overview of all the different programs and groups and departments that might be involved in this kind of effort. So that's the sort of two main things that we had asked that the committee be focused on, and then once they're set up, they could, of course, decide to incorporate other things as well.
That's what you're on.
I think this is something that's sort of needed. Uh, I, just looking over the breakdown again, um, I think that pretty much covers every, all the input that, that we're gonna want. Um, how quickly would it, would something like this be able to be functional, do we think?
I mean, I think the biggest challenge is just getting
Forming it.
Forming it together, and I can't say for sure, of course, but I know there's a lot of interest in this topic, and I know that, for example, um, we had worked with some folks from the Affordable and Fair Housing Committee, and I think that they would probably want more than two members on this committee, if possible. So I know that, um, the challenge is, I imagine, might be getting the landlord representatives, but again, it's an opportunity to have your voice be part of this discussion. So while I don't think, well, I know for myself, but I don't think for any of the other councillors that were involved in putting this forward, I don't think we've done any dedicated outreach quite just yet because we're waiting to see if this has
The general thought's on.
There's certainly, I know, at least in my own precinct, I can think of a handful of landlords that I could reach out to who might be interested, and I'm sure
More than you think, they're gonna wanna say.
Yeah, that's what I think. I think they'll wanna voice and a say in this and the opportunity to have some some input as to what happens out of this, so.
And who would be appointing these nine members?
Um, I believe it's a mayoral committee, so
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was a city council president.
Or is it a city council man?
I thought you said
Sorry, no, my mistake.
City council president.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, then, well, that's what I thought I heard as well, okay.
No, no, my mistake. City council president would be
Okay. Everything that I've seen about rent study committees across the nation has led me to conclude that unless it is truly a balanced approach, you're getting all the silos into, into the game, and everybody feels some sort of buy-in to the process, you end up with a report that's lopsided, and I would be disinclined to have a lopsiding report. And I know there's a lot of interest in the subject, and I think it's coming from the Affordable and Fair Housing group, which is great, and the tenants who are very, uh, up there, having the rental increases that they recently experienced. What person would be? Um, so my concern would be that we have a group that of smart people who bring along various perspectives. I'm convinced that there will be smart people with perspectives for affordable housing and for rent control. I, I think if we add two among the tenants themselves, okay, if we add two members of the Affordable and Fair Housing group, that becomes at least four, I would think, four or five? Four, four anyway. And you have two landlords over here. I think it would be important to have small landlords, mid-sized landlords, and larger larger landlords, corporate landlords.
Little bit of the fundamental purpose to being part of this, who wants to be
Wants to be part of it, and, and the incentive would be, are we early in the game to start this and to do it? If, 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 if we're really looking for a balanced approach and having interests come together to share ideas, come up with a plan on what's needed, because I imagine you'd wanna have things like, uh, research, local rental rate, uh, vacancy rates, housing conditions, tenant demographics, small landlords, mid landlords, and large landlords. I would think you'd want the planning department to be involved in the product. Um, but that's gonna require time from municipal resources. If we're, if, if, if we're thinking of doing study, and I don't know if any of this data that would be collected is already available or information is available by the local planning agency. And I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that makes sense for us to know more about as we consider this. Uh,
I would say that I think that's that speaks to the need for and the purpose of a committee like this because we don't know what's available and what's out there.
And what's
So we did think about, for example, should the Fair Housing Committee take this on? Should city council take this on solely? But I think having a mixed group of folks do this legwork not only gets people invested from a wide range of different voices, but in all honesty, I mean, it's work that probably, for example, the three of us and city council, we could do it, but we all have our city council duties and our, you know, pay jobs and other things, other demands on time. And so I do think that it speaks to your, your points. It does speak to the fact that this is the purpose of the committee because the committee might come back to us and say, "We looked into it and we spent a lot of time and energy, but guess what? There, we don't have any data right now." So that might be an outcome, but it's a way to spread the, the work a little bit. spread the, the work a little bit. Um, and the other thing I wanna mention too is that I am not as worried about sort of the, the overbalancing or not in terms of where people are coming from because it's more about the representation because we're not asking them to, you know, make major decisions. We're asking them to collect data. So it's really about, they're an information gathering body, I, as, as I see it. And the other thing I, I also wanted, wanted to keep in mind is I know, especially at least for the two of us, I'm not sure about you, JT, but for me, I'm also a small landlord too.
Right, I know.
And I think you are as well. So I think from the city council representation, we'll get a lot of intersectionality on that front, and, um, I actually don't know if any city councillors are renters, but, you know, I think that between the different roles that we have thinking about, do we wanna make sure we're not overbalancing, you know, too many renter voices or too many landlord voices? And the, the question around, can we get a variety of like small, large, medium, large, um, landlords? I think we'll be able to be intentional with some of the other roles that we've named here to make sure that there's a really good variety of, of spread of voices on the, on this committee.
What you don't want is three councillors who are landlords, plus two more landlords. So, yeah, I gotta.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't want.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. So that's why.
But at the same time, like, you know, to, because I think to your point around, like, you know, having renters and fair housing committee may be, and I also think, like, we can't assume in advance where people are coming in from, but there may be perhaps more inclination to support a rental voice. So if we say, okay, well, we'll have at least, you know, as we're thinking about the city council president's thinking, who of the councillors will be on this committee? That might be another element that, that he would take into consideration, so.
Yeah, I happen to like this breakdown. I, I, I think that just spans it across the, the, the four populations. Um, you're gonna get different voices from, from all all angles.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll mention too is with going to the, the focal points. Um, what I also like about the way it's laid out is that we're not saying that we are going to petition the state of Massachusetts to allow East Hampton to implement it. We're saying we're gonna explore it. So that's another thing too. The committee may come back and say, no, doesn't make sense, or it's a lot of energy and time, and the chances are zero that we'll get it. So I also think that's where I really see this, this body as like our tool to be able to really get a deep dive into some of these questions that we've talked about at the city council level without having to expend a ton of city council resources to do so.
See the role called limited to whether or not to file for special, I call it, official legislation. Uh. Is that the, the, the role?
There, there's two, there, there's two points. So that's one of them for sure. And then the other point is to study and analyze and review any data that relates to what East Hampton could do to think about supporting and protecting renters in East Hampton, which would include the review of programs, departments, people, like basically, what do we have existing in East Hampton around housing and renting?
So insurance, the information gathering, they would present us with, with what they found.
Yeah, and I mean, I think there's definitely some relatedness to those two points because I imagine that the study and review, you know, kind of the situation and the state of affairs in East Hampton could lead into or bolster the determination of do we want to do a petition or not? We could, I'm, I'm just conjecturing at this point, but maybe they're like, well, there's really not a lot of support here. We don't have, it would take a ton of effort, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we could make the petition, but it would need a lot of, it would need a lot of work. It sounds super feasible. So I feel like they're, they're not exactly the same, but they're, they're certainly related, but those are the two kind of points that, um, the committee would be focused on, so.
Justice Terrell.
Oh, no, all my questions have been, I think this is a, a good idea. I think this is like Counsel Jezek alluded to, we don't know what we don't know. This committee will tell us if there's things that we don't know or if there's things we should know. Like, like Counsel Jezek said, they could come back and say, well, this isn't gonna be worth the time, the effort, and, and, and everything based on what we found, or they could come back and say the opposite, but we don't know either at this point. I think that's the whole purpose of this
Yep.
proposed committee. So I, so I, I support this. And I think the breakdown, I guess, I think the breakdown is, it seems fair as far as the voices, um, that will have a voice in this.
Is it a, is it a, is it a rumor? The naming of the committee, is it really a rent study committee or is it a tenant study committee?
Study about rent, about renters.
I think rent.
Rent is.
It's a, a study about rent.
Because it relates to rent control or rent stabilization, and it also, it does relate to renters, but I think rent encompasses the, the two points of the committee.
I was just looking over the, the. I think it makes sense to move forward. I think it makes sense to do this.
All right, um.
So if there's no further discussion, then do gain a motion.
All right, I will, uh, put forward a motion to approve the establishment of this rent study committee as described.
To recommend.
Recommend the approval. Yes.
We only recommend.
I recommend.
We, we, then we recommend.
The approval.
Rules of government relations.
I sent that.
All right. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, zero. This concludes. Good job.
All right.
Anything else that, uh? And doing that, I would need a motion.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.